The Thursday, March 20th special meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at 6:02 PM. It's rising.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mrs. Conley is not here. Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Martin, here.
Um, oh, we've got a couple of things on here. We got Rose Powell on here, too.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Mrs. Race?
Here.
Ms. Edgerson is here. And Alice, um, we need to change the, uh, agenda to put Alice Rudy's name on. And Michael Maxson?
Here.
Add him on, too. So Alice is absent right now. Hopefully they'll show up. They might have forgotten the time or something. Let's move on to public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Any public comments? Mine?
No members of the public.
Move on then. Adoption of, of the agenda. Can I ask for a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed, same? We got five of us, five zero. Um, no public hearings, no action items, and we are on to the budget workshop. Mrs. Falcon.
Falcon left my.
Just for the opening session, Emily and I are gonna tag team this, this presentation tonight, so. Um, thank you all for coming tonight. I hope you had a chance to look through the budget packet that we passed out last Thursday. A lot of good information in there. Couple boards before us tonight. These are the highlights of the 2526 fiscal year. Um, some nice projects that we have going on, some road projects.
Bring it closer. Rendering of the new city hall, the front.
Oh, it looks awesome.
Amen.
Can't wait. So exciting. Yeah, we can pick that up, but. Be in front of city hall. Everybody that wants to come in and look at it.
Okay, um, a couple of things I just wanted to point out. The Model A. It is back in Cedar Springs. So excited. It came back this week. Um, Troy and I texted just a little bit today to try to figure out how we introduce this back into the community. This beautiful vehicle that belongs to the community. Um, just preliminarily hoping to have it at Community Night, which is April 17th, weather permitting. Um, but then we'll get together and if you have any suggestions on events, you know, coming up where we can present this to the community, let us know and we can work on that. Um, if the council would like to go see it, please just give us a call. Um, if Greg's not on a call during the day, he is available at the station. So if you'd like to see it, just let us know. Um, secondly, well number six. Um, I've communicated a couple of times over the last couple of weeks. It's online. Oops, it's not online. Effective today, it is online. So, um, this is a complex system that we are introducing along with our other two wells, so we had to make sure it was perfect essentially before it's part of our system, so. Russ gave me a little, um, memo here, just a little bit of details about the well. Um, it is producing 550 gallons per minute. That is not by any means maximum capacity, and we're doing that for a reason. When you introduce something of this significance to a system that already exists, we're taking it slow. So. You know, hoping, hoping not to stir up the system too much for the residents. Um, but soon as we get comfortable with that, we'll, we'll increase the capacity. So. Um. Yeah, that was all I wanted to share on the well. Next I want to talk about in the 2526 fiscal year budget. Um, you'll notice some wages have increased, and there's a reason for that. Um, I have begun some staffing changes internally. You probably noticed the utility billing clerk position that we currently have posted. Getting some excellent resumes in for that. Um, we're accepting resumes until March 27th. That's our first review. We'll go through them, interview potential candidates. Hopefully one of them will selected, become part of our team. By the time that happens, though, it's gonna be, we're gonna be well into April by the time somebody comes and joins our team. Current utility billing clerk is not leaving. Um, once the new, new utility billing clerk is up and running, promoted to full-time finance director. Finance director and deputy, deputy finance director and deputy clerk right now are assured position. So, full-time deputy finance director with additional duties. That will also involve training, several weeks of training. Um, once Kerry feels comfortable, then April will be promoted to full-time clerk. A lot of training between Rebecca and April will happen when that, when that comes on, comes up. And then by July 1, my plan is to promote Rebecca Johnson as the assistant city manager. Lighten my load. So. Um. Twenty twenty-five, the two days that we were closed to the public, we were in this room literally with charts on the wall, trying to divvy up all the important duties that we all do, and this is the solution we came up with. So I'm really excited for it to come to light. Change, change, change. It's, change is inevitable, so. Um, I think this is the best solution for everybody, so excited to see this happen. Um. Lastly, I just wanted to mention this past Tuesday, we were closed to the public. That was our first day. All of us were here going through records upstairs. We.
Well, that approved it. We had no idea. Like, why did they not answer their phone?
Just going through records. So we were able to purge a lot of records that met their, the retention schedule. It looks different upstairs, but we, we still have a long way to go. Um, there is a lot of documents up there. Like I said, almost 400 boxes that we are going through, so. Um, very productive first day. We're already planning for the next one, what we're gonna tackle. Kinda get a plan. So thank you very much for allowing us to do that. It's very important that if something's met its retention, we get rid of it. Um, the less we have to digitize, the less we have to move to the new building. Um, it, it's time that gets done, so. I have, before we get into the budget numbers, any questions before we get started? Oh, all right. I'll turn it over to Emily.
So let's just jump into the budget. Um, did you have a presentation? Have it in front of us, but. Yeah, it might not be a bad idea to pull it up, but while you're doing that, I'll just go ahead and get started since you all have it in front of you, so. Uh, so a couple.
Call switch to you. Sorry.
Thank you. I was hoping nobody would notice. Just kidding. All right, so a couple introductory pages. Um, so just organizational chart, and obviously you all know who you are and management. Um, so very minimal changes in the last year, um, as far as that goes. So then we'll jump into, uh, the next page on millage rates. Um, so you'll see all the millage rates, um, for the past 10 years, 10 or more years. There might be a couple of extra years in there, but um, the only change that you're gonna see in there is for the, uh, millage for the fire station bond. Um, we are proposing that at 1.4211, um, compared to 1.9999, um, that was levied this last year. Um, and so that's the only change, um, in terms of city millage rates that we're gonna, um, propose. Um, the other ones are just carried over from the previous year because we don't know, um, what those are gonna be yet. They're usually not set until April, May, um, timeline, so. Um, so yeah, so there will be a slight reduction in that millage rate. Um.
Can I ask why that is?
We have some money in the fund balance, um, for, that's reserved for the payments for the fire station bond, and so we're gonna use up $50,000 that's in the fund balance. Um, because that's already set aside for that, so, um, yeah, we figured rather than building that up, we're just gonna put it towards, um, the payment this next year and reduce that, so.
Forty years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-five?
That's on the future page here.
Yeah, a couple pages.
For twenty-five, so.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
Here, you will also see the average residential taxable value continues to increase. Um, the, uh, 2025 taxable value has gone up approximately 8% from the previous years, and that's due to, um, new developments, uncappings, um, with the sale of homes and the rate of inflation, which is 3.1% for the 2025 tax year. So then on the next page, did a little bit of a analysis of what the average tax bill is, um, for the average, um, residents. So that comes in at about $3,453, which is up 6.58% from the previous year. And moving on. Next page, right here, the general fund. Um, so this page shows the net revenue, net revenue over expenses, um, for each of the last 10 years, which each year has been positive, so that's a really good thing. And then, um, to the following page, that shows the cumulative effect of, um, the positive changes of the net balance um, over the last 10 years. So, um, this is specifically unrestricted fund balance here, so you might notice that this last year it did actually decrease a little bit, even though there was a positive change. Um, overall, um, the decrease is because those funds were assigned to specific projects, so capital purchases or projects that are upcoming, they were assigned for those purposes, so they are not included in the unrestricted. Um, so that's the only reason that it went down slightly was just because those were already assigned for specific purposes. And then moving on to the next page. Uh, here is an overview of all of the funds, um, cumulative budgets. Um, so you'll see total, um, this results in about a $12 million budget, which seems like a lot because it is. Um, it's a little bit inflated, um, by one-time, um, expenses as well as non-cash expenses. Um, so there, there is about $5.3 million of capital outlay that's included in this budget, um, which is gonna be outlined on the next page, um, which we'll get to that, but then, um, also depreciation of about 360,000, so that's a non-cash expense. Um, so when you take out those items, it's approximately a $7 million operating budget compared to the previous year budget of 6 million. So it has increased, um, over the last year. Um. So then if we look at the next page, that'll show what's made up of the, what makes up that 5.3 million of, um, capital outlay. So got a lot of different things going on, so these are um, really gonna be the highlights, um, of the budget. And the first part for the general fund, that's all related to the fire department. Um, those are, that, those, that's funds that set aside for future capital expenditures, so that's not necessarily funds that are gonna be spent in the next year, but more so funds that are gonna be set away for future purchases. Um, so that's 100,000 total there. Um, we've got the heart of Cedar Springs Park. Um, that will be about $600,000 of the budget. Um, we will get a 50% grant match, um, which will be 300,000, um, towards that. And then the big one, obviously, is, uh, city hall renovations, um, at three and a half million, um, which will be funded by a bond that will be paid over approximately 15 years, so we haven't closed on this bond yet. That'll probably be July, right when the fiscal year starts, that we'll be closing on, um, the second part of the bond. So the first part was the purchase of the building, and then the second part of the bond will be, um, for the renovations. And then we have $100,000 that we are putting towards the digit, see if I can say this, digitization of files. That's a tough one. Um, so that's gonna be a huge thing with our move coming up. We're gonna try to tackle as much as we can this fiscal year, um, but there's gonna be some constraints, including time constraints as well as um, uh, financial constraints, so we had to work some of the, a lot of this into the next year's budget since we didn't plan for it in the current fiscal year. So we're gonna try to do as much now, but there's gonna be a lot that still needs to be done, um, between the remainder of this year and the beginning of the next year's budget, just to prepare for the move, so we don't have to move all those files. Um, and the amount that we have budgeted for is significantly less than the quoted amount, and that is because we are working diligently up there to get rid of as much as we can, um, before we have those files digitized.
Question for you. Um, so the 100,000 is just a minimum of what you're asking for? Or what you're?
Fiscal year. There might be some expenses that we can start on it this fiscal year, but for the next fiscal year, we are asking for $100,000 to spend for that. Mm-hmm, yes.
To companies to figure out how much it's gonna cost? How do they determine that? I mean, how?
Are P L right now? So we've had companies come to city hall.
Okay.
Rebecca has brought them upstairs, showed them all the boxes. They're doing their calculations.
Okay.
Those are due next Thursday, March 27th, so.
They know that you're going through and trying to minimize whatever you can, but is it by pay, piece of paper that they're charging you, or how does it, how do they do that?
Yeah, I don't think. Yes, so there's several different processes that they have to go through. So initially, they have to do a preparation of the documents, so there's a charge for that. There's also a charge per scan. Um, and that's where you see like the per-page fees. Um, and then there's also like the, the record management piece after. Um, so you have to have a digital system to then maintain those documents. So it's, it's kind of separated out into like three different bundles, preparation, scanning, and then the, the maintenance of them.
That just, that company maintains that?
Yeah.
We'll have that software both cameras.
Okay.
Search those files.
So we have nothing digitalized yet?
Upstairs, no.
From, we do have some digit.
Else, probably early 2000s to now, I mean.
With this new system?
Anything we want into there. So if we already have digital files, we can then take our digital files and put it into this, um, archiving system as well.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Then, um, moving on to major streets and local streets, we've got some road projects planned for the next fiscal year. Um, those will total about $700,000. Um, sewer fund. There is, um, some capital expenses there, um, about $100,000 for the replacement of the control center at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so that's, uh, very important, um, to get that done this next year. Uh, water fund, there's nothing too notable there. Um, we put the new well, or all the new well expenses were in the current fiscal year, um, so that's done, so water fund will be um, pretty mainstream for the next year. Um, hopefully, as long as nothing major comes up, and knock on wood. Uh, and then the equipment fund, just a small equipment purchase, uh, Kubota with the, um, sidewalk plow there, $60,000 planned for the next year. Um, otherwise, just maintaining the existing equipment that we have. Total is about 5.3 million dollars. So the next page, that outlines, um, our long-term debt that we have. Um, so you'll see the new, um, bond for the purchase of city hall in there, the, um, 1,427,000. Um, we just made our first interest payment this year, but our actual, um, principal and interest payments will start, um, the next fiscal year, so. Um, that'll be about $243,000, um, of the next year's budget, and that's gonna be the largest of the payments. Um, then there are approximately 120,000 dollars each year after, but we'll also have the other bond that we'll be paying on as well, so, um, yeah, that should balance that out, um, pretty good. Um, so yeah, there's a payment schedule there for the current fiscal year, plus the next three fiscal years, um, for all the, um, governmental activity bonds, um, four of those total, and then three, um, total bonds for the, um, water and sewer funds. So I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any questions on any of the stuff that we've gone over so far.
Question. With the acquisition of the new building for city hall and DPW, uh, storage, which is the other storage area that we have, are we going to have for equipment for the DPW? Uh, is there gonna be room enough for everything?
We're gonna keep the, um, staging area building.
Okay.
For all of our signs and stuff that's stored in there now. Other than that, W, you know, Valentine, I think I have over there will accommodate everything they have in this building and the building next door.
Including the ones we leave sitting outside when they're not being used. Okay.
Once the doors are big enough so we can fit the vehicles inside.
Okay, I was just, just curious, because I know the expansion on there was a major factor for the price being more than the $2 that I kept emphasizing, but uh, just curious, there is enough room there or not? Walking through it with them, I, I thought there was, but it just as we grow, we're going to acquire. So I didn't know if there's gonna have to be some kind of addition on that. So. Okay, that's all. I, I just didn't know if it was something, okay. Nothing immediate, though. Okay, thank you.
Got a question on the streets. I don't know my streets that well, I'll be honest. Uh, the corner on Westville, is that Solon Street, I think?
Is Pine.
That, that is Pine. Okay, the Pine is listed here.
From Main Street to the White Pine Trail.
Perfect. Yes, I was gonna say, that's a little rough.
First year.
Yeah.
Next year.
About a lot of them.
Right. That one's extra rough.
But it's just, uh.
Travel. And that area is nuts.
Those. Yeah.
Could be a fall, pro, paving project.
It's bad.
Engineers are designing that right now. All of our street projects.
Yeah.
Each seventh, pine, fifth, our engineers are, you know, engineering them right now. If we can pair that with other paving that's going on in the area this fall, we might be able to bid them out this fall. Especially if there's no water and sewer projects under the road, it's just the road.
No. Yeah.
How is there a? I might be going a little off track here, but is there a long-term plan to connect, uh, a road from White Creek to the city? Uh, I don't know what road that is by the. By Cherry, once the apartments are done? Or is that all 425 and we gotta talk about that later?
Twenty-five, however, I did talk with the Kent County Road Commission, because that's technically county roads, not city. Apparently it would stay county, but the county wouldn't fund the construction of that. So. I was gonna start reaching out to other communities. Where did you secure the funds to, because that would be a designated truck route.
So I guess we all need to call the Kent County Road Commission?
Does M M O have anything that they can help with on that?
Hmm. Maybe I, I.
You know, there is a bill right now that did pass the House that's supposed to help with.
Funding? Okay.
State, yeah, the state.
Oh, would it be Kent County Road Commission's road allocation?
Uh, uh, yeah, that wouldn't be a.
They said a developer would have to fund that while.
They're still trying to figure out that piece of it where they're gonna get the money for the county roads.
That would be our designated truck route.
All right, any other questions before we jump into the general fund? All right. Uh, so the general fund is the largest of the operating funds, and it operates most of the activities of the city. The largest expenses in the general fund include lease and fire, which is about 38% of the total, um, general fund budget. Uh, see kind of the main highlights of the general fund for this next year, um, the heart of Cedar Springs Park, um, so that's gonna be, um, upcoming as well as the renovation of the building that is, has been purchased for the, um, new city hall. Jump into the general fund revenues. Um, so starting off, um, we are looking to use some money from fund balance if everything in this budget, um, comes to fruition. So, um, you'll see about 458,000 right there, um, coming from fund balance. Um, we do have a current fund balance about 1.6 million, so even if we did have to use that full amount, we would still have a pretty healthy fund balance of over a million dollars. Um, the largest revenue source of the general fund comes from the ad valorem property taxes. So that is at 1.8 million, um, for this next year. Um, that's about a 7% increase from the, uh, current year budget. Uh, you'll also see the bond issuance of three and a half million for the city hall renovations, so you'll also see that later under city buildings and grounds as an expense. Um, so those will offset each other, um, and then obviously we'll have the annual payments that go along with that, um, over the next 15 years. Um, the second largest, uh, source of revenue for the general fund is the state revenue sharing, um, that we get, and that's about 453,000, um, that's projected for this next year. Uh, and then, um, we're also, um, planning on getting some grant money for the, um, heart of Cedar Springs Park through the trust fund grant, so you'll see that 300,000 that's included in the budget there as well. Um, and so that, that does have 600,000 of expenses, so that'll cover about 50% of the project cost. Um, we do have our, um, fire department contract in there with Nelson Township. You'll see a slight bump in that. Um, we are asking them for more funding for equipment purchases. Um, right now, the contract includes 5,000 for equipment purchases annually. Um, and so we're upping that to at least 10,000. I don't think we've gotten the final word on what that's going to be yet, so. Um, so yeah, that's still tentative at this point, but we should at least be getting, um, what's included in this budget. So total revenues, um, are at 7.3 million for the general fund, um, but that does include three and a half million for the bond issuance, so if you take that out, we're at about 3.36 million um, in revenues, and compare that to 3.13 the previous year, that's an increase of 7.33% in funding. So with that, we'll jump into the expenses for each department of the general fund. Um, so the first one we have is you guys, city council, so, um, should be pretty straightforward there. Um, no, no changes really from the previous year. So moving along, we've got the city manager, um, department, so the biggest change here is gonna be, um, the wages and benefits. Um, that is due to the position changes that Darlo was talking about before we started, um, into this, so, um, that's really gonna be, uh, the main difference there that you see from the previous year. And that's also gonna be the case with the general administration department, um, is increase in salary and wages, um, due to the staffing changes and new position being added. Then next we have the city clerk. Um, just small increase there of about four and a half percent, um pretty similar to the previous year. So that'll be a full-time clerk plus assistant city manager. Um, Rebecca would still be helping April with city clerk stuff as well. Um, so we got that factored in there, so um, yeah, no major increases there. Sound like it was working. Oh, there it goes. Okay. So accounting and auditing, about a four percent increase over the prior year for that, pretty normal um with inflation, so. Uh, we got the IT department, so um a couple things going on here. So we are um looking to secure a new IT company, um somebody that would be uh more local, that would be able to assist with um the new building and getting everything set up for us. The current IT company, they are not quite doing exactly what we really need. I mean, they. Efficient for now, but once we move into the new building, then we're going to need um a better solution for IT. Um, IT projects and getting everything set up, so. Um, then we have the hundred thousand dollars for the digitizing the files, which we already talked about. Um, and then about five thousand for a new website, so our website is very outdated and needs to be refreshed and um just completely revamped. So um, that's factored in there, so there's obviously a big increase um for this department. But these are mostly one-time expenses that are not going to carry forward each year, so once they're done, they're done. Um, so we have the files and the new website that those will, you know, be one-time expenses that will not carry forward. Might be some expenses um related to that, but um not as much as what's proposed in this fiscal year coming up, so. Just small increase there, about two percent increase, um nothing material to note. City assessor, um increase of about nine percent in expenses. Um, and that's really due to the cost of assessing services and that has not been increased in years, so it was um definitely due for an increase. Next, next department is elections. Um, I'm sure Rebecca can tell you this, but I'm sure that's very hard to budget for. Um, so last year we, or I guess this current year, um we had a presidential election, so that's reflected in the sixty thousand dollars um of the budget for the current year. So next year is um going to be a decrease of twenty percent, and that's based on two general elections. Um, there is a possibility of three elections, so that could be um something that we may have to amend the budget if that does happen. But um for budgeting purposes, we're planning on two general elections um for the next fiscal year. City buildings and grounds, um so the biggest thing here is going to be the City Hall renovations of three and a half million, which is offset by the um bond um that was in the revenue. Um, so if you exclude that, um city building and ground expenses would be about a hundred and sixty-three thousand uh compared to two hundred and eighty-four thousand um for the current um year budget. Uh, so that is uh decrease actually from the prior year, once you take that out for the bond expense. And then we have the city attorney. This is another one that's hard to budget for. Um, it just depends on what comes up during the year and that's hard to plan for, um but it should be significantly less than this, than the current fiscal year. Located employee benefits, um that's, there's not much in this department, but there is a um increase mainly due to workers' compensation. Um, that's across all of the funds. You'll see increase in workers' compensation liability expense. And we have the police department, um so this is a um pretty big part of the general fund um budget. Uh, we are looking at about eight hundred and thirty-one thousand for police services for the next year. Um, this number came from um Kent County. Um, that was their estimate that they gave us. So that um compares to seven hundred and ninety thousand, which we have budgeted for the current year. Um, so that's about a six percent increase, and so that's based on um their union contracts and um the schedule of pay increases that they have factored into those contracts. Of the fire department, um so we are proposing an increase of uh fifty-seven hundred dollars for officer pay. Right now officer pay is very minimal, um so that uh definitely needs to um go up and is factored into the next year's budget. Um, and then most, most of the stuff is pretty comparable to the previous year. Um, we are putting uh sixty thousand dollars towards the purchase of the twenty-twenty-seven um fire truck that we will be getting. Um, so we previously had put fifty thousand away each year, but there's definitely going to be a shortfall, so we're trying to um save a little bit more to go towards that purchase. Um, yeah, so overall that puts us at about four hundred and eighty thousand for fire department expenses. Um, compared to current year budget is at five hundred and nineteen thousand, which that includes um the purchase of new turnout gear um in there. So um that's a big reason for um the higher budget in the current year versus what's being proposed. And then next we have the building inspection department, so this is a new department. Um, and this is a result of us changing to PCI for our building inspections from IMS. They handle the payments differently um than what IMS did, so we receive a hundred percent of the inspection payments. Um, which is in the re, the general fund revenue, you'll see that as sixty thousand dollars estimated. Um, but then we pay out ninety percent of that to PCI, so that, this fifty-four thousand is the ninety percent payout. Whereas with IMS, we would just receive ten percent of the inspections. Um, so we wouldn't have to make any payments to them, we would just get our ten percent cut off the get-go. So um just a little bit different way of treating the payments, um but in the end the, it should be pretty similar in terms of um overall revenue. Uh, street lighting, um fifty-one thousand dollars for street lighting, it seems like a lot. Um, hopefully we can try to switch some stuff to LED bulbs and maybe find some savings in there in the future. And then next we have cemetery, um looking at about an eight point five percent increase there. Um, a lot of it's just dependent on how much time is spent in the cemetery, um and that can differ from year to year. Um, but generally springtime, there's a lot of time spent in the cemetery, um even throughout summer and fall as well, so. Um, yeah, so looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. We have the planning department, no real changes there, pretty, pretty much the same as the prior year. And code enforcement, about two point seven percent increase, and that's really just due to cost of living increases in wages. And then community promotion, um so that total expenses of thirty-six thousand dollars approximately, um which is down from um the prior year mainly due to annual taxes on city property. So we had fixed city-owned parcels that had been exempt at the December Board of Review, so that um. It, that was about sixty-eight thousand dollars that we got refunded for this last year in city taxes. And um we don't have to pay taxes going forward on them because they've been um exempted, so that was a good thing. Uh, then we have the parks department, um biggest things here are wages, um as well as equipment rental expense. Um, and that's really dependent on the time that's spent uh in the parks, so kind of hard to forecast. So um those amounts really are based on the current year, um but it, we may not need that full amount for wages. Just depends on um what's all being done in the parks this next year. Uh, and then we have um our Heart of Cedar Springs Park, um expenses there for that project, six hundred thousand. Um, which like I said, will get reimbursed um three hundred thousand for that. And with the um trust fund grant expenses for the park, we are less in expenses than we are the current year, just because we had all the expenses for Heritage Park um in the current year budget. So that project's done, so we won't have anything um for that, but now we're moving on to the next project, so that kind of replaces that there, so. Uh, debt service for the drain assessment payment, no changes there, that's the same every year. And then we have transfers out, so these are um the payments that the general fund um makes on our um bonds that we have. So you'll see a little chart there of um what payments are made from the general fund um towards those bonds. Um, the only change, well, the big change is the um City Hall, new City Hall purchase. So that's two hundred and forty-three thousand of principal and interest payments for the next year, so that is factored in there. Um, and yeah, I think that pretty much sums up the general fund, so do you guys have any questions on anything in the general fund? Those are our payments on our bonds. Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on to the perpetual care fund. This is a required fund that we have to have um due to our cemetery. It's just to maintain the cemetery in perpetuity. We have our street funds, major and local streets. Um, the street funds are, the revenue comes from the gas and weight tax from the state of Michigan. Um, little bump, two percent in the Act fifty-one projected revenue this year. To spend a lot of fund balance, I mean, to have, paving is not cheap, to, to fix the roads. Way. Take, so, um, in the major street fund, we've got. Street, which is one of the major truck routes from Cherry Street to Pine Street, complete resurface there. And then Pine Street from Main Street to the White Pine Trail. Again, we've got several phone calls on that. We're trying to keep the potholes, you know, patched the best we can, but um. Like I said, the engineers are working on that right now to see. And that, so. Other, other than the street projects, we've got routine maintenance. Um, I mentioned we will be transferring some funds from fund balance in both major street and local street, just to get the paving, paving done. Um, local street projects, we're looking at Seventh Street from Muskegon to Beach. And then Beach Street from Seventh to Fifth, um around by Rigo Park there, that is really bad.
Really bad.
Hoping to get all that done this year. Um, rubbish collection fund, we have been levying point five, um a half a mil for a couple of years now. We're proposing to keep that. It covers our expenses. Um, current year budget fifty-nine thousand, we're going up to sixty-one thousand. Uh, a half a mil will bring in um just shy of sixty thousand dollars. So that's um brush pickup in the spring and in the fall. So we do have brush pickup coming May fifth, and then we do um fall leaf pickup, just once a year. Next we have the DDA fund, um the proposed budget from the DDA, um slight increase in revenue, a hundred and eighteen thousand. And nothing new really in the DDA, just really continuing to help fund the, the projects going on, the annual bike race, the New Year's Eve ball drop. Um, the DDA does contribute, they did contribute this year to Heritage Park, and they are planning to contribute twenty thousand towards the Heart of Cedar Springs project in the new fiscal year. And concerts at the amphitheater, um so. Very effective use of the DDA money. At the library fund, so this budget is prepared by the library director and his finance committee. Um, requirement of PA one sixty-four that the library budget is housed within the city's budget, so that's why um it's more before you tonight. And you guys approve budget amendments throughout the year and all that good stuff. Um, but completely, you know, created by the library board or the library uh finance committee. Next is our general obligation debt fund, so anytime your general fund. Secured fund, we have to have a general obligation debt fund that the checks get cut out of. So we're transferring money from the general fund, tax dollars, to this fund, and then these, this fund is where the bond payments go out of. It's a requirement, kind of goofy, but. On any of them funds? Emily?
All right, we'll jump into the sewer fund. Uh, the sewer pr, fund is an enterprise utility fund, which stands alone as a separating operating fund from the waste. Fund for the wastewater collection system and treatment plant. Uh, the primary source of revenue is from the utility rates that are charged uh to customers using the system. Uh, per our ordinance, we can raise the rates annually by the greater of two percent or inflation based on the CPIU for all urban consumers in the Midwest. Um, which that was three point one um through February um for a twelve-month period. So that's what we're proposing um for the next year's increase, starting July first, is three point one percent um on our current rates. So treatment plant, um see some pictures there. Um, the big thing this next fiscal year is to upgrade um the control center at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the current operating system is obsolete and there are no longer replacement parts available, which is a big problem. So that's uh really the brains of the treatment plant, so got to make sure that um that's sustainable. System, uh mainly just general maintenance items um for the next fiscal year. So then the sewer fund budget, um you're gonna, you'll see those three point one percent proposed rate increases um factored into the ready-to-serve fees as well as the sewer billing fees. Um, we are also um proposing to take about a hundred and fifty thousand from fund balance um to support this budget. Um, there is about two point eight million in um cash fund balance in um the sewer fund, so that's pretty minimal compared to what's there. And we may not even need to take that um amount out of there, um if we can find some savings or um. Also have about a hundred and thirty thousand of approximate remaining funds available on an Eagle Grant um for emerging, emerging contaminant assessments. Um, so you'll see a hundred and thirty thousand of expenses, um so really this is just to cover those expenses um under that grant. Um, a notable change is the cancellation of our um contract with infrastructure alternatives, um so that was a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar savings. Um, you're not really going to see that in the um overall expenses at this point. We've been doing a lot of um maintenance and upgrades to the plant um since we took it over under our control. Um, so those things are factored in here, um as well as that um control center, the hundred thousand dollars there um that we're planning on doing this next fiscal year. Um, so there is a decrease though overall in the um expenses for this fund. Um, last year we had road projects, or I guess they're still going on for this, this current fiscal year. We had some ro, road projects that included water and sewer infrastructure, and the road projects for this fiscal year will not include water and sewer infrastructure. Questions on the sewer fund? So this next page shows our um utility billing rates for the past six years, so you'll see our, the proposed rates, um they're highlighted. So that's the three point one percent increase, um so that's what will start on July first. Water fund that we will jump into, um so this is also an enterprise utility fund and stands alone as a separate operating fund. Um, this is um also dependent on the utility rates that are charged to customers, um which is the primary source of revenue. Um, you look at the numbers here, you'll see the three point one percent rate increase. Um, also factored into um the water fees for the ready-to-serve fees as well as the water billings. Um, so those are really the main differences for the revenue side of things. Um, in terms of expenses, uh not a whole lot um of differences in expenses, nothing real notable. Um, just mostly maintenance items, um we had the well put in um for the current fiscal year. Just mostly maintenance items, we had the well put in for the current fiscal year. So that is all paid for, so we won't have anything in terms of that in the next year. So expenses are also down because there's no road projects that require water and sewer infrastructure, just like the sewer funds, so. Yeah, so we're actually proposing to put about two hundred and fifty thousand into fund balance at the end of the year, if all goes as planned. There's, there's currently three point six million in fund balance there as of January thirty-first. So we'll be adding to that hopefully. And then to wrap it up, we've got our equipment fund, revenues in this fund are primarily generated from the rental rates for the use of equipment within the DPW garage. By various funds of the city for twenty twenty-five fiscal year, the purchase of a Kubota and sidewalk plow is budgeted. Otherwise, it's just the maintenance of the existing equipment that's already there. So there is a overall increase in revenues, which come from mainly from other funds within the city. And that's just due to increase in equipment rates as well as increase in usage of the equipment. And then expenses, pretty stable with the previous year. The only item to note is the equipment purchase, the Kubota and sidewalk plow, which I mentioned already, sixty thousand dollars there. The one we have is pretty old and there's not much life left to it, so gotta replace that. So yeah, I guess that brings us to the end of the budget, is there any, any questions that we can answer?
Yes, of course, one of them is, we just got done, we just talked about water and sewer. And you know how the complaints are, how expensive it is already. So. If we didn't increase it three point one percent for each, how would we be? I know that, that fund has to, if something breaks at the, you know, at the plants or whatever, it would have to fix those things, but. Explain to us the need for the three point one percent increase, please.
Well, I don't know how many of you were on the council when I first came to Cedar Springs in twenty sixteen. The utility rates hadn't been increased in several years, so we had quite a significant increase for a couple of years just to get caught up. Are the city of Cedar Springs rates high? Compared to what? Because you really need to compare that to another plant.
Exactly.
Like we have the same number of customers, the same amount of capacity in the water and sewer department. There's, there's just too many factors to really find apples to apples. If you see the progression there in the, do you have that? The rates. So three point one percent this year, last year was two point seven, the year before that was five point oh nine. I mean, it, it, it really depends on the rate of inflation, prior two years to that were two percent.
Where we should be, because you said that we were behind for some time.
Think unfortunately, we, we do need to increase a little bit each year.
You know, or. Yeah, yeah.
I don't mean to put Russ on the spot, Russ Johnson is with us tonight, he is now in our lead utility operator in charge of water and sewer. I don't know if you've had time to really look through, you know, a hundred percent of both water and sewer. You know, water fund this year, we're not anticipating any capital purchases. Ash Street, Ash Street project that's going to go on this May twenty twenty-five, current fiscal year, we're redoing the water, the sewer and the road, two full blocks. So we're trying, I mean. Twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, Beach, Fifth, Pine Street. Are fine, but who's to say twenty-six, twenty-seven? Maybe those streets that we identify, we will need to do water and sewer under those street sections, we're going to need money for that.
We need money for the year that we're proposing for, we might need the money for the future or if something breaks.
Go ahead, honey.
We're good, but just so you guys know, there is quite a bit of stuff that is coming in the future and I would, and by future, I say ten years out maybe. Yeah, because again, it's the crystal ball, you know, you don't really know until something blows up, so. But we do have, we still have transite pipe in the ground in some places, which is like an old, it's like a fiberglass style pipe. It's not a good idea to keep it, we shouldn't be upgrading that stuff, but it's going to be over time, right? We have some stuff, the wastewater plant needs to be addressed, but not immediately. It's going to be addressed over the next ten years, like I said, but it's not cheap, you know, we're talking easily six figures. From a standpoint from year to year, year in, year out operations, chemistry alone at the wastewater plant is crazy. Two years ago, when we buy ferret chloride, which is one of the chemistry components, we needed the wastewater plant. You know, say it was, easy math, it was five thousand dollars to get our year to supply, it's ten thousand dollars, now it's doubled. But there's also ferret. Polymer. Hydrated lime.
So you're testing more chemicals, you need more chemicals.
Same, but the price has gone crazy. Sludge hauling goes up at least, I don't know, eight percent every year. So like the, the legacy costs and all that stuff just keep going and then we can't control that. But. We looked at the rates a little bit too and like we're right in the middle statewide. But as far as like Darla said, you know, there's, you gotta find a community that has the same stuff that we do. So if you have a city the size of Cedar Springs and the rates are, you know, just say fifty percent less. Well, they don't have a wastewater plant, they have a lagoon system. Operating expenses for a pond are zero, right? There's, that's just not apples to apples, you think about the right community, but. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
I think the, the argument typically is when we're speaking to the public is, you know, we have. You know, our, our water prices are so expensive, water and sewer bills, but we still have this brown water. And as much as we talk about why this happens, I think that's just kind of a whole capsule. How people are kind of thinking about those things, now we know we've made them very aware this past year. Multiple times about how water, you know, when, when things are, when water moves different ways, it's going to stir things up, so.
Interrupt the system somewhere. Change the flow direction. You know, scale, just like a river, right? Water flowing down, river, sand going a certain way, if river goes the other way.
It starts to, correct, it settles differently.
Yes, and the other kind of caveat to that too, and I don't want to get off on a tangent about brown water, but we know it went through a big flushing program this spring. Last year was kind of a anomaly because we only had two wells, well, three was pulled out of service because of the arsenic issue. Now that well six is on, our food capacity jumped way up. Because six pumps, it more than double what three did anyway. So to do an aggressive flush is not a problem anymore. When you only have two wells, you're, you're kind of fathering it, I guess, you're trying to take it easy on systems, you're not taxing it.
Well, that's good to know, you know, I had no idea, so bringing in this new powerful well will be able to do a better flush for. Correct, correct, okay, very good.
Along the same lines, we've now increased the water capacity that we can provide. Where are we as far as reaching capacity? Or in the near future with all the new apartments, the new development on the north end of town? As far as needing to expand anything at the treatment plant?
At the wastewater plant? Oh, we won't do anything for a while, a good long while, so over the last probably. Five, just say five to ten years, the, the amount of water we're treating at the wastewater plant has been dropping slowly. But that's due to when street projects happen that involve the water in the wastewater collection system. We're tightening up the sewer, so there's not as many leaks in there, so we're not getting rainwater and groundwater out to the wastewater plant. That we don't really want there anyway, because there's no food in it for the bugs to eat and all that stuff. The more we tighten that up during street projects and everything else, the less we're treating, which gives us more capacity to treat for real things, like the apartment sewer that's going to come from the apartment complex. So right now, we're, we average about eight hundred thousand gallons a day for treatment. Our capacity for good treatability is two point four million a day. Our hydraulic capacity is four point one million, so we have a ton of room.
That's good to know. Very good to know.
Areas again in another.
Yeah, very much so, yeah.
Okay. That's fine, that's kind of what I wanted to hear.
I'll do my best.
Very good and helpful, so I appreciate that, I learn something new every time, so it's not just, it's water, but it's so much more.
And I know that the whole thing about people saying water should be free. Water is free, go around the creek any day you want, grab a bucket of water.
Do you want to clean? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There you go. Are you, do you have something, you have any questions?
I, I guess I would comment, like, people like to compare their neighbor down the road, a mile down the road that has a well, they're only paying fifty bucks a month for a pump.
You'd tell it breaks.
Well, I just paid a well company eleven thousand dollars last week to drill a well, you know? People in the city don't have that expense, you know, wells require maintenance, so. Yeah, you're paying hundred, hundred and fifty bucks a month for water, but on the other side of it too, a well's great, but. It has its own expenses too, and I mean, I remember at that one meeting, I made some comment about like, why do we pay so much? You guys did a really good job of putting a chart together of cities nearby, I mean, I was wrong, be the first to admit it, so.
Well, I think we all kind of feel that way. I mean, we all live in the city, so we pay the same, you know, we pay, we pay just as much as everyone else, so.
Biggest freshwater system in the world, you know, and you wonder why we have to pay so much for water and it's like, it's, it is what it is.
Michael?
I, I have no questions, I think everything was very well presented.
So we have on the budget then? Communications. March twentieth, public notice, is that just was for today, okay. Council comments. Mr. Gross?
Just looking at me, I was thinking maybe that was coming, but. I, as usual, the presentation is great and. A lot of dollars talked about, there's a lot of dollars involved with running a city. There are only certain things, if, if people want things, we're going to have to pay for them. And I will guarantee you that if you think you're saving someplace else, you're probably losing in, in other areas at times. I can tell you from being associated with a couple of townships. There's awful lot of grief and headaches as far as roads and it's all county. Still hear about it, so our roads are not the only ones that need a lot of care. Complain about a given road at a given time, you know, so. Best we can do. And unfortunately, that best that we can do is expensive. So. It comes with the territory, there are benefits and the benefits you're going to have to pay for some way, that's like we said. Everybody's paying them. Comes out in a different manner.
Mr. Maxon?
Yeah, presentation of the budget made me realize. You go through the, every single line of this and how complex it can be and the attention to detail that is, that is obviously paid to something like the budget. Makes me appreciate the staff that much more, and I was. Glad to hear of the, the reworking of the, the personnel. And, and the hires and the promotions and it's so far as the people moving up through, through that, the personnel ranks. As far as that can be considered promotions, I think they're very well deserved, what you laid out here. Gives me a lot of faith that, that Cedar's in good hands.
That's the way it should be, you reward those who are working towards being rewarded. And if there's a potential movement upward. That has to be considered along with, if they aren't performing, they move down, I bet they have to have, they have to have that incentive. And I think we have a good group of people here that are looking for that, so.
Thank you, no, that's okay, Mr. Marvel?
I was actually going to say the same exact thing you just did, I just really like that people within are, you know, moving up and. One thing that happened this year that I really liked from the city was the utility department, you know, it's our own people now. And I just, one thing I noticed is that when you have your own people, they take way more pride than an outside group, you know? So, and I, I think our employees do above and beyond job here at the city, so you, you two did an amazing job again presenting it, so. I am so excited, you know, and it's, yeah, I love the direction the city is going, so.
Mrs. Race?
Pictures, I asked for pictures and I got them, thank you, thank you, appreciate that, so. No, there's a lot of work involved, I can't even imagine the, this would make my hair just fall out probably because I pulled it out, so. I know it just takes the right person to do that and we have an excellent team to do, do all of this and. You know, just truly appreciate all the work you guys are doing, the trust is there. We know that you have a lot of work coming up with the new city hall coming. And as always, I'm. If ever you need to help from any of us, you let us know and just appreciate all that you guys do.
Yeah, I, I think that. Moving on to other things, becoming. Having your own utility company and changing companies when we find that the other company's not working. Instead of staying just because we've always been with that company, I think that's a, a great thing that you've been able to do on this Falcon and also the staff. Doing research on different companies for different things and different phone system and different, I mean, you've done that. You guys have done that for the last, you know, five years or so and it, it's just helped a lot and. We can't put our fingers on those things that need to be fixed, you know, we don't even know half of the things that are going on, so. For you to run the city and make it so we don't have to worry about those things is great and. It's, it's just putting a cap on how good of a staff you are, so I really appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. And anything else? Hey, we're adjourned, seven eleven.